Is everybody ready?
I'm always ready.
Well, I was ready to stand up for General Office.
You totally did. I was like, wow!
Here what's happened?
It was great. I think he didn't, he never knew, he didn't know.
Oh.
He just stood up and I just.
Your hands are beautiful. I already said nothing, just a camera.
Whoa!
Whoops.
Stretching all that.
Josh, you're.
Yes, please. Okay, so one of the two things that I wanted is to just go over the subdivision regulations. Do you have any more now? There's questions or comments or anything like that. And you guys see when you can look at a little deeper. Then I'll talk about confidence stuff after that. Time for me to just do the question again. I'm gonna go through some of the stuff that began in the presentation in just a little bit more detail. Cause it lays out the role of what the planning commission does. We need to train on some of that property at some point. What subdivision regulations do. The goal of it is just to talk about the changes again, make sure everybody's good to go with everything. Luckily, there's just one other revisions that we're talking about here. The first is in a number of places throughout the document. It says development services, which changed that to planning and engineering department because that's what the planning commission has renamed their department as. Waiver criteria clarification. That's just adding a fine disclaimer basically that financial returns are not solely based on grant. So my brother, as I mentioned last time, I'm talking about it, that's a common board design. It feels very standard, so it's just something where apply this. Which basically just means it's not, it's not ground, ground services for a waiver if it's, if it applies to expenses. That you gotta talk about characteristics of property, you know, is there a topographic issue? Is there, is there some kind of really strange hardship, fewer hardship that wouldn't apply to everybody else that hasn't been followed backwards? So that's, that's a good one, so I always want to get that in there. Supporting documents, so this is just stuff that would require whether they're life applications. We already require all this stuff for the most part, all, all stuff that's in life we do. I did want to get letter of agency put in there. We have something in the zoning code that says letter of agency is required, since it's in the subrarex. I'm all up against spenders, making sure everything says the same stuff. And then at the, you know, where the A there. For lots, certain, I said seventy percent of systems, high intensity soil map, at least a big variety. They're not gonna talk about that, just, that just keeps you wasting people's time. Waste our time, waste everybody's time when somebody turns in an application and it won't work. And that requires them to make sure it perks on the front end before they turn it. That's just your basic due diligence. And the other, the other thing they do is that they keep things when they turn in, they expire. So sometimes they, sometimes they, they get something turned in, especially on the next slide, I think it's the next slide for minor plants. They'll turn the plant, they will not have to start the soil work, takes six months to get the soil to die higher, takes three months to get out there. They log the guy around for a while, feel about it, and then they, they turn it back in, well, the plant's already expired, and by the time that they get it all worked out. And so this is, this is make sure that they do the due diligence on the front end. Those families do this, and so it's just something, something that we need to do. Scale for minor block final class, this is, this is a wonky stuff. But they allow the smaller scale for silver blocks, they're typically smaller, and will have more detail needed for these ones and that kind of thing. T date requires one one hundred percent basis points. This just clarifies P date approval, set to areas, there's some discussion about the suburb having environmental list, or the county duck department doesn't have any role in any of that stuff. Or the state department, yeah, I think years and years and years ago, they, they made things in set to systems, and now they've done it's all, all teaming, so just start with that. This is, that's the slide I was talking about for minor, minor final class, we already require all this stuff. With the exception of the high intensity soil map that may be turned in when they submit that final plan application. So they have to have a water letter, letter of agency, D, showing that they own the property or have the right to develop it. Improvements to substandard roads, this is something that gets us, the zoning code again, it'll allow the subdivision regulations. What it says there is an improvement on major subdivision plan. Planning commission can require improvements to be made, make sure that impact of the most elements that that wording applies is already there, it's already been there. We're clarifying some of, on A, there's some stuff that I'm going to go now about eighteen foot wide roads and that kind of thing, that improvements are required. What this says in the standard is less than eighteen feet, which shall be subject to improvements along project's frontage. It's part of the major plan applications, none of that expense expense. And then we had some discussion in the last meeting about center turn lanes, whether acceleration, if any acceleration lanes would be required. And so I kind of rewrote that a little bit. The fifty lot threshold came from Wilson County, they have that, that goes now. And so what we'll get in there is at minimum, a center turn lane and acceleration and acceleration lanes will be mandatory for more than fifty residential lots proposed. Now, we don't took that directly out, but Wilson County pretty much don't want that one to happen, that's what they had in there. Then another question we had was whether they have multiple entrances, and so this would require all the entrances, primary and secondary. Long-term shall be okay, dollars. And then right away, they need to require their responsibility. Road improvements in areas from the flooding. Change this around a little bit, this previous one we had was last one, when we talked about it. Basically, what it says is we're gonna build a new road that's in the floodplain now. You have to put the finish floor elevation of the road two feet above the hundred year floodplain. That we don't want new roads being built in the floodplain, right? So they have to be elevated, and it goes on further, to talk about no rise certificate, so you can't build that road without somebody out. So you have to have a study to show, you know, the curves, let water pass through, all the things, that you don't have to do there. Connections to existing roads within the floodplain. What that says is that subdivisions can't construct a new public road access onto the second road, public, public road, onto a lower road that's turning in the floodplain. So you can't take a new public road and connect it into the floodplain without elevating that section, build it up. But again, there's traffic, I mean, not traffic, except there's safety, long-term maintenance issues that go along with that. It says to terrify the drainage, people turns out of the floodplain so that asphalt doesn't wash away and all the things that we saw. C is county infrastructure requirements. No rise certification has to be provided. And I think one of the changes there is I broke C to be a part and added it's pettivea, that's on the little section there. Placing a field, that says it's where fields approved by the county engineer to bring the elevation to the floodplain, require elevation. Can't move the floodways, you can't build the floodway, that's a rule across the country, part of this state construction program. And it handles the ponding and John, I think that's one of the questions you had was about ponding. So they have to show the calculations that it's not gonna just pond up and cause a problem there. And field has to be protected against erosion by a designated river. On the five down there is just something that says flood requirements, so the zoning code and the subrarex, that's just all the administrative protection. Critical lots, we had some questions about this from some different builders and that kind of thing. Are critical lots, that's something that require for lots that are flood prone or are steep or whatever. With the wording there, it clarifies is that the county engineer can approve critical block land, if the proposal's graded, so they're, it's gonna be graded, and build the house is gonna be two or greater. So that's taking existence to steam, so they have to, that make the lots, and the part that they're grading has to be graded, and there's something left to that. Remain walls, we've talked about that a good bit, four, four feet or higher, Tennessee professional engineer aren't that. Secondary one for emergency access, we've been talking about this for a year or two now. I didn't even get on that actually the last meeting, we should talk about it, I think, that's been talked about for a long time. Subdivisions that have thirty, more than thirty lots, shall provide more than one entrance onto a public road in order to facilitate emergency access. Unless you can't use a road to do an undeveloped property reserve.
Do you further define secondary entrance? I don't have it, I'm a little unclear on that. I know, I think I would, if this were in terms of the secondary entrance could possibly be a trade.
That's a good point, that's a good point, and I had somebody actually ask that question tonight, somebody else has asked that question, I'm able to discuss that with y'all. Should that, that secondary point of emergency access, is that, is that a public road? Or is that a, is that a gravel road that's cut in basically to provide an all-coming to access?
If you capture a road, and lots would exist, a road would, in my view.
Josh, one more difference. A subdivision containing more than thirty lots, is that the same as just a road?
Well, that's, that's, that's safe, this is what you're talking about there, about the existing county members.
Yes, okay.
And so, so the return to the rock point there, that's, that's a good point. And so what Ron, you might wanna, you know, what you might, you know, you might wanna talk now about, if you wanna add a sentence there. Might need to talk now about what you want that to be for, for this evening. And I mean, I don't think there's anything wrong with adding that in to the language here, that maybe, you know, when we, before we started on, but we need to figure out how to help them want that to be working.
Yeah, I, I would work on that, but I, I really think you should work on that. Yes, sir, that's, that's. The return can work through that.
That's right, that, that's.
They haven't had a return.
That's right. And so, so what we might want to do is add a sentence there. To say something, secondary, that such secondary entrance shall be up on the county road, stroked at all county road standards, or something like that, you know, something.
I was wrote a man that he believed that the secondary road would be out or better designed than the existing development roads. That would know that as a standard, the road would be exactly the same, and it could be better, we'll never warn.
Right, right, so that we build the county road standard. The, the, the roads that are gonna be in that subdivision, we build the county road standard.
It's, it's a development, and I was thinking, set there, thirty foot road, thirty foot wide road. But yet the secondary road coming off a private drive or something, I'm just filling this out, I was just thinking. Would only be sixteen to one, if we don't, if we don't qualify or qualify that description of that road. And someone said, well, it's a useful road, a secondary, nobody's gonna use it except for X. I think the road, I, I personally think the road needs to be constructed as the same or better, with the same way of, and shoulder requirements, curves, just something out there.
If you don't block it off, people are here.
Right, right, but that's gonna be blocked all the way. Right, right, and if you want the secondary entrance, of course, we have the division, we link it along with the development, but typically we want that entrance to be open to the public, open to emergency access, although.
Yeah, I don't think the current planning commission, or full commission, would entertain law, or what's happened in the past, I mean, that's, that's happened. I mean, it is what it is, but I don't think the current planning commission would, would want to see that, which is not being a thing.
By definition, if it wasn't a public road, it'd be transgressed.
Well, so, so, you know, if you did, if, if there's any number, I mean, the scenarios here, if you, you know, you can, you can strip the subdivision, you have all the script running, you did one, one entrance here. And then you have essentially a gravel road that just goes down the side of the development or something like that, that gets you out of it, you know, there, there could be any number of. But, 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 but Ron, I think the driving down, I think it's a good point, is that you want that emergency, whatever, that, that secondary point of access, all points of access for the subdivision should be constructed as a county road. You know, to those, to those standards.
Yeah, I drove down Shiloh Road, which I've never done today, because it ran in the middle, there's like two hundred and eighty-eight corner streets. It could be connected, Shiloh Road can spot out, it's wider than two hundred feet. Cause I had to pull off the road through a guy fast.
Yeah.
And that, that would be so. It might be, it might just through the emergency, if you're getting the standards.
A lot of that can be covered too by this, the, you know, there's less than eighteen feet, might with, have to be, the rebuilt county standards.
Right. And I agree with Ron's suggestion, if we make that change, how is this different from the fifty lot subdivision that needs two entrances?
I think what it's saying basically is, is that, oh, I'm sorry.
Well, earlier, if you go back some slides, there's requirement for fifty lots or more, they have two entrances. Did I miss that?
No, what that says is that you do fifty lots or more, you gotta put that turn line on, he says. Sorry, I. This stuff's so simple, come on, man.
We got some duct tape in there.
I said some of this, get the wording, and know what y'all want that, that's really important, I'm gonna keep searching background with that, if we're gonna make a change on the forward this evening. That's very important. That'd be a good idea, that's the photograph, I think we probably didn't know that name.
You know, John, you know, John, as we were discussing, that, that is, you know, top of thirty-four lots here, fifty. Could we find, could you explain maybe, maybe it's mine, or both of the other staff, both of the non-understanding fifty. Where did fifty lots come from?
What was the county does?
Okay.
But that's, that's just a number that they set to do the, to do the terminals. The thirty lots comes from the fire code, so what the fire code says is if you, and we don't, we not adopt the fire code. Southern county doesn't have a fire department, or the county doesn't have a professional fire staff, or fire chief, or fire code, or anything related to it, and it gets money to the voluntary fire departments, that's it. And so we have adopted the fire code, but the thirty lots comes from the fire code, there's an appendix to the fire code. It's optional to be adopted if you do adopt the fire code. And what it says is if you do thirty lots or more, you have to provide a second entrance, unless you sprinkle those homes. If you sprinkle the homes, then you can go above that thirty lot.
I got you, thanks for that clarification, I didn't understand, thank you.
So that, we need to, like I said, we. Yeah, that's, that's very important. Protection of the joint sites, what this is saying is we're discouraging people from burning stuff under the development process. Can't, can't discourage anybody from burning out the county otherwise, it's under state's purview. But as part of the development process, my assumption, and I may have been proved wrong initially, is that maybe we have some degree of control over that. And we can, we can require as part of the, you know, the pre-bond meeting and all that, if there's, it's only within a thousand things of an existing subdivision, these be shipped or otherwise. Which is what the city require, but again, cities have a fire code, cities have a fire department, cities have a fire chief. Mourned appearance certificate of completion, this is just adding in, something that's represented in that section of the code, from the end of the subdivision regulations. And then we'll talk about the advertising, so this has to be put paper thirty days prior to the hearing tonight, so we got that paper on August the fifteenth. If there's a bill, we need to defer this or anything like that, we'll have to live with that, we'll have to get advertised, probably November meeting is when we can come back.
What kind of stuff on that, that's subject, Josh? Can we just remove, remove the emergency access verbiage from it, make it required that there's a secondary entrance, there's more than thirty lots?
Because in, in essence, it's gonna have to be anyway. I mean, at that point, it's gonna have to be, I mean, if, if we want to do that, then the road has to be up to, to the county road standards.
So the reference to emergency access is really irrelevant, just make it a secondary entrance, that's why you're, you hope this is kinda standard? Does that stipulate, you know, the verbiage? Can we just take stuff out instead of?
You know, you get what I'm kinda asking?
Yeah.
No, he's talking, well, I guess, go ahead.
I'm not totally sure I understand.
So we're basically saying we need second point of entrance for subdivisions, for emergency access for subdivision thirty lots. What, from kind of what Ron's getting at, and the rest of the group kinda seems to start to be working towards is. We want that secondary entrance to be the standard anyway, so would removing the whole reference to it being emergency access?
Yeah, yes, yes, yes.
It's just saying, secondary access is required for every lot period.
Yeah, so, so, I, he might say, secondary access is required.
Yeah, and then it has to be.
Secondary access required, but I would still, to, to Ron's point, I would still say something about it being a bit public. If somebody will try to get, Galt, Galt had a subdivision a while back, can't think of the name of it right now, this is an old one that's been built out on years and years. And it's just one of those, it couldn't happen now, but it got up to a hundred and something, a hundred and fifty lots, one way in, one way out, eventually the city told them no more. And what the, the guy came back with was a gravel road to efficiently get you through his property to, to, you don't want that, if you get.
You want like a real entrance, not an access.
Right, right, but so, so maybe secondary access required at the top there, instead of emergency access. Subdivision contained one thirty lots on by one way of road.
So for more than. All the entrance?
And, and, and I mean, the saying in order to facilitate emergency access, that's not a bad thing to say, though, we can strike that too. And so, and then no circumstances. And then I would add a sentence there to say, all entrances shall be constructed to county road standards, or something like that.
And I'll visualize this, if anybody's in the Cape Town, I'm sure everybody in here has, you go to Cape Town, there's some access roads that lead out. And they're, they're almost like, I mean, it's interpreted as private roads, they're actually emergency roads to get out, and they're unapproved. So we, we definitely, we're gonna give any impression, I don't think, obviously, I, I would, I got to stay focused on that. That this will be, as I stated before, an emergency exit, I mean, this is something that you day in, day out, I think, as a secretary of state.
There is. You can't follow the way that one is, it's a nice, it's a, it's a very.
I mean, you can think of, we have special targets there.
All right, so I think what we'll do.
And you explain your law, you know, there's, there's huge plans for the, for the, for the, the county.
All right, so if everybody can look up there, and we'll, we'll, we'll lay it in this.
Secondary point of entrance required.
And so, and I'll just make it clear, I'll, I'll stick this in the presentation, we'll, we'll say, secondary access required, right?
Yep.
Well, I, 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 I think, I think. A couple of months ago, I said, belt your mother in one of these meetings too, so I don't know what's happening. All right, so what we'll do is we'll, I believe, we'll, we'll make that green, that's the big wording green.
Shall provide one and one public entrance onto a public road, set to be closed.
Maybe secondary entrance, maybe access, access to me doesn't sound like a little, is that what it says, down, down that market?
I can clear. We might be clear about one of those issues, it's discussed, I'm looking at concept.
So second, we'll say secondary entrance required. All right, and then we'd be striking in order to facilitate emergency access there, so just all go public road. All of the roads shall be constructed to the road standards. To the public road standards.
County county road standards. I think that's what we use the rest of the.
Sound like sense?
Yeah, that's great. To meet the county road standards.
Shall meet.
Is it to meet or to meet?
Shall meet. That works later.
I'm hoping that my thickness darker. Is there a forest in it?
There is.
It's nice on the little ones, that makes it very dark.
Everything, hard, really, not a joke.
It's down on the bottom.
Right near the thickles.
No, it's, where you go.
This is the end of each year, this is the end of this.
Yeah, they're out. That's the one I.
Green is my favorite. And road.
Vet, the vet.
False number is.
So I was trying to think about the existing residents. And then, of course, at the end of the day, everything in this world comes down to money. And all the policies, all the stuff that we do here in the county, they have an impact on the bottom line. And so you want to do things that you do all, you want to do both ends, right? You want to be able to do all these things in a way that causes the county to continue to pay prostrations as well. So that was my fault in working this, working this, what this vicious thing. Like I said, that's just a stamp. And so like, what do you guys want? I got a welcome, any thoughts on that?
It's homework, is that what it is?
It's homework, so I don't know. So, and then, so, uh, there's a survey as well. So I couldn't help but put a few meetings up there.
That's great.
Uh, I don't think we have to take it, we'll take this survey, I could be wrong, but I think probably we'll get a good response.
You'd be kind of surprised when I was with the history of the CSB, just trying to send out questionnaires to our customer. To the customers, it was pretty tough to get them to answer.
Yep. And sometimes, and, and, so I guess my thought would mean just that there's a chance of something like this here is something that might go viral, to use the term. So I can, I can see it either being something that nobody pays attention to, or something that becomes a point of great interest in the county, some ways we see it.
Next to Paul, and I had to survey, the survey had to do all about questions, things copper and the climate, to help complete it. And I didn't know what happened, so I'm guessing all the customers had no clue.
That's right.
So you're exactly right.
That's right.
If you don't have the answer, that is what's so bad. It means something to you.
And I understood, and I could be wrong, but it seems like in Southern County, any village, city, or town, nothing is people talking more than growth and development. I think that's one thing that everybody has to.
We do have a survey.
So, little survey, we've come up with some, again, we took a stab at it, so we've come up with some questions here. We've got a survey built, we've tested it, it works, we can change these questions however. But we've come up with some questions, try to figure out, one, who's, who's answering the questions? You want, you want to know where they live, where they live, you know, where they work, what's their age, that kind of stuff, generally, you want to understand that. And then, uh, the way that we've got it, but again, this is just a first step. It may be rare.
Is it, is it a data point that's really important to the county?
Well, like, for example, where do you live? If you're getting, if you're getting, uh, responses from 20% of people who don't live in Southern County, that's another thing to know. If, if we're doing a land use plan for the stuff outside of the county, and 80% of the big developers probably live in the cities, that's something you need to know. There's still county residents, they have a right to visit, I mean, for sure, but you want to know that, people want to kind of know. And then age, if everybody that's answering the poll, or the answer to the surveys overseas is high, that's, that's still valid information, but you're not getting the young families and those kinds of people. So what he said is like, around two, it's going to be more input. When we put this information out, we did, we did hit with, with everybody, with this interview, but it didn't hit with others. How do we find the families? You know, how, how do we get, and that's where we can work with tools, remember?
Probably, what if your age, if you enter eight, you probably won't pass that.
See, you know, that. Right, right. That's, 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 that's governmental, uh, that's governmental. Number four, I was a little hesitant for that one, but I think it will be an interesting question.
If you needed the parentheses on that, not within the municipalities, because people will see that.
Right. And the one thing I think about this, which is, is that like, not necessarily, you don't necessarily feel answers from the surveys. Like, they don't necessarily tell you what you have, like, what policy you need to do. Sometimes, but like, on some of these, you, you get, you get an understanding and a perception. Right? So like, if we ask a question, like, on Long Years, you know, to develop, you know, a lot of things, something about, I forget what you want to do, is financial sustainability, having government, and versus impact, right? And so 80% of people come back, or 40% come back, or whatever, saying they had impact, they need to develop in there. That doesn't make it, so if you do that, it's letting you know, it should, maybe that's the kind of priority that the person's saying that it's not your part, you know, the county's part of it. And so these things, really what, what a lot of this is intended to be, is to get some feedback from the public, figure out what people are finding important, what's their priorities. And then, four, if you guys have that, you know, if there's, you know, if there's fees that we often try to code, we can code. If there is a county that needs to face some kind of a rural reserve or something like that, four, you know, and then figure out how you're backed, and be able to look, you know, for future things. And we tried to also kind of take it across the spectrum, uh, from, at the, you know, in terms of a very anti-developing kind of perception, if you're, you know, or, or we need more housing, you know, the earlier that, try to capture the, 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 that's kind of the challenge of this, is try to get, try to get the whole range of opinion into it, so you can kind of figure out where, where, where things fall. And, and, and the normal things we did as well was to have, number five, is have people rank those things. So we missed it on the, on the survey, and it works, um, in the cities, and you, you know, what, what do you think the most, what made you, uh, mess with it a little bit to make it a little bit easier to understand that? Uh, but, uh, but it's, you basically, you, you drag and you rank these five things, you're able to do it in the survey. Uh, to rank, what do you think, the most work issue based in Southern County, and what's the least work issue based in Southern County? And then we have, at the bottom, we've got a letter of confidence, and so that's just like what they didn't type in. So to get that, um, well, Woody's kind of been kind of talking about, talking about this, questions and that kind of stuff, and what else is on, sort of, but this is something, it's not, it's not perfect. On the wrong side of the, I wish I did. Um, I don't remember if I handed this out, but David, yeah, this is QR code, QR code, QR code that, that's on there. Oh, we got that, uh, so, 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 and, uh, this is something that we could have out, that people can scan, and take directly to the survey, fill it out, turn it in. But it's also got, you know, the analog way of, you know, people want to provide input. Just, you know, if we're going to have meetings or something like that, if we go to talk to somebody or something, we hand these out, these public counterparts where they give us, give us their thoughts. And that can be, that, if you want to hang on to all that as part of the funding process, basically. And then, let me see. Maybe if I was like, signing sheets, what would you say, that way? So that's where we're at. Um, we've, like I said, it's kind of high note stuff, we got to start on some of these things, but then we also want to, uh, get some feedback, and to go from there. Homework, maybe look at this stuff, that's another thing, any feedback to go up a little more to consensus on, you know, the slogan thing, whatever you call it, motto, plan motto, plan, uh, plan statement.
Mission statement.
Yeah, and then the mission statement, yeah, the, the vision statement, um, work in, work in progress, we do need to nail the survey questions down. You don't want it to be, that's kind of the challenge, I think we got a lot of questions on there, and they're kind of complicated, to be honest with you, it takes some range of places to sit. This is complicated stuff. And so, any, any input y'all have on that is, is definitely most welcome. Uh, if there's more questions, if there's questions that could be more clear, if you read it, you're like, what the heck are you talking about? That's not even something that the funding commission doesn't understand what we're trying to drive, it says, let me know that. Uh, it needs to be something that people can understand, but it also has to be useful, you know? Do you want to develop, do you want that next door too, you'll hit your, that's going to be no, but, but the, the issue is much more complicated. Um, the goal will be to go live with the survey in October, um, and what we can do probably is, is, uh, I've got it on there, is, is a, is a hospital, I've been in a center, probably what we want to do is come back in October and talk about all this stuff with you guys, and get some final. But I want to talk between that, and to, you know, along with you guys, and to help you think.
Okay.
Um, that way we can kind of have it refined, bring you guys something in October, and then go live with the survey, probably have it open for about a month, is what, basically what you do. Talk about some ways to try to get it out there, see if we can come back, and of course, you know, so everybody will be able to post it on social media, share it with your friends, you know, tell everybody about it.
Well, we have a link to the paper.
It's, yeah, and so on the, yeah, on there, we have it, so on, on the little card here, yeah. There's the QR code, of course, and then below it, there's a, a little hyperlink, it's not something that's that long, it's a little hyperlink through our G I S. Uh, but you can just, you can type that in your browser, if you want to do that, or click on it, because we'll have this as a video out, too. One thing that, that I did want to say, just to make sure everybody understands this, like sunshine laws and stuff like that, I think we can't do, we can't, we can't debate it like the monks did with the email or something like that. So if you have questions or something like that, give me a call, whatever, come by to me, that kind of thing, but we can't, we can't necessarily, I'll, I'll defer to stick here there, but I get uncomfortable with like liberating the email a lot on something that might be known or something, that's a little policy kind of thing. So it probably won't stand away from that, so, so I will, but, but I want to do that, that's, that's such a thing. Let's do that, it's all okay. So let's, we'll miss.
Is everybody good if we still continue to have the public speak at the beginning of each project?
Go to the chair.
Put it there.
All right, it's five oh three, we're going to go ahead and start this planning commission, following our work study session. First, Ron Stroll, please give us an indication.
Dead fire, I'm going to break this again, to say that we're all completely with the leaders, the leaders of our very country, the leaders of our study, and the leaders of Southern County, uh, lead with, guide us in the right direction, and do what's best for the citizens of Southern County. Jesus, amen, pray.
Pledge allegiance, led by Josh Stott.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic on which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Uh, I've been entertained, if there are no changes, approval is to August twenty twenty four, man.
Mr. Chairman, there was one change, okay, uh, to the version that was the email out, to the, to the planning commission, what, what you guys actually correct? On page nineteen, there's a clarification, and that's the last paragraph, by the A C P pipe, uh, so, uh, there's a, with the clarification there, so we changed it to A C P pipe is, is located where it's located, so, both on page ten, okay?
All right, is that change?
Make a motion.
Mr. Rissa, make a motion second. Mr. Belgium, uh, all favor, opposed? Abstaining. Abstaining, abstention, yeah. The, uh, approval of the September twenty twenty four, January, settled by Commissioner Noda. Second by Commissioner Holes, all favor, opposed, passage in unanimous. Okay, we will start, uh, what, what we're going to do is, is as each project comes up, we will have any public comments at that time, so they freshen our minds when we discuss the project. Uh, we are going to start with item number one, which is a public hearing, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Stone.
Yes, sir, Commissioner Chairman. Mr. Chairman, the third item that's on the agenda this evening is a set of revisions to the, uh, Southern County subdivision regulations. Um, as the planning commission does, is something that, that we've been working on quite some time. I believe the last set of revisions that made the planning, the planning commission subdivision regulations was in September. Last year, uh, we have, since they were comprehensively updated in twenty nineteen, we tried to do an annual update. Uh, so that's what this is, is our annual revisit to the subdivision regulations. Uh, so powers of the regional planning commission, I'll read all these verbatim, uh, but the, the, a lot of it, I don't really understand the threshold, or the, the scope, I guess, of the, the planning commission's authority, of the regional planning commission. Uh, but one of the things, the, the one thing you guys are charged with doing is promoting cooperation amongst the other municipal planning commissions, working with the cities and the county, uh, county officials to, to coordinate the development of the Southern County region, uh, to advise county municipal legislative bodies, uh, in the formation of public improvement programs, sort of their projects and that kind of thing, that are coming along, that has something to do with the county, and you guys are empowered to review those. Uh, prepare and adopt the general regional plans for the development of the regions, so these comp plans, what we just talked about a little while ago. Uh, review and approve the design of any grading lighting roads, um, you guys have a, have a, a required first review of any road in county, and certainly on road, unless the planning commission wants to have it first. Um, prepare and certify zoning ordinance and map, resolution in our case. Uh, review and remand recommendations, uh, for amendments to the zoning regulations in the map. And the last one there is regulate the development of land through subdivision regulations in cycling and repeat. And so, we have that, both on the agenda this evening, subdivision regulations updated, we've got cycling as well, the next item. Uh, as part of the subdivision regulations authority, you guys are, and exercise the power granted to the planning commission, you guys are required to adopt regulations governing the subdivision of land, and so that differentiates that from the zoning code, which governs the uses of property and dimensions of property and all requirements. Uh, this, this governs the subdivision process and the, uh, public, public, uh, public infrastructure requirements. Uh, and so, the goal of those, our home is to develop a region, coordination of roads, and then the subdivision of land, uh, with state regional plan, municipalities, both added, open spaces for traffic, light air, et cetera. Uh, conservation of, or production of water drainage sanitary road facilities, avoidance of population congestion, and the avoidance of standard or premature subdivision of land. And so what that means is, um, approve of development land or services to everybody, and you guys have the authority to determine what that is. Uh, so going back in history, our first subdivision regulations were approved back in March of nineteen fifty eight, that's the earliest version in our records, uh, and they were amended from time to time, there's a gap in history, um, uh, through the sixties and then in the seventies. Uh, in nineteen eighty nine, there was a comprehensive rewrite that, uh, the, the, the state, the S E D, not the government office, coordinated that across the state, a lot of counties, we were one of them. Uh, those kind of sat for about twenty or thirty years, uh, but they were amended from time to time, but they were properly revised and reprinted again in twenty nineteen, and as I mentioned, we've, we've done a routine update since then, with the last one being approved in September nineteen, twenty twenty three. Uh, so with the proposed revisions, I'm going to run through these, the planning commission started, uh, several times now, uh, and we talked about them in length during the study session prior to this meeting, uh, with a couple of minor textual text changes, um, that were, that were noted during the study session that I highlighted here, uh, that, that clarify, uh, some of the, the, the text, for, for, so. Uh, first proposed revision is something throughout the document, um, my department is referred to as the development services department, that's changed back early this year, I believe, the Jan order by the county commission, we're now calling it planning engineering departments, that just clarifies that. Uh, there's a, the red text there at the bottom, related to waiver, granted waivers, um, there's an additional finding that we're requesting the planning commission to make, part of granting waiver, just another way of saying a variance from the subdivision regulations requirement. And essentially that just says financial return doesn't constitute sole basis for granting a waiver, um, you have to demonstrate some kind of issue, really, you need partnership, total grant, and string, those kinds of things, uh, to, to get away with. Um, supporting documents for preliminary flat applications, uh, we have letter agency added in there, that's something that's required by our zoning code already, uh, but this is just in the subdivision regulations. Uh, government, government, well, A year, uh, is, uh, we require the high intensity soil map for all your septic lots, or the new set system, uh, when they submit that preliminary flat application, we do have that soil map, as I mentioned during the study session, that, that, that's down a lot of wasted time, expired flat applications is, is basically buildings, uh, they need to do prior to earning that, that application. Uh, rather than county, for example, requires this, this, as well, as part of the preliminary class now. Um, we've differentiated between septic and sewer blocks, we're scaling this part of the flats, and allow fifty, fifty foot, uh, one to fifty foot scale for, for public sewer blocks, and they have, it's a lot of details, so that's something that we asked for as well. Um, clarification that T D A is the one that approved all septic areas, there's some reference to the county environmental, this is not a deposition that exists, uh, and there's, uh, some reference as well to, uh, the county health department, which is not a, they don't make any fault in that anymore either. Uh, so requirements for minor final flats, uh, these are things that we generally already require, this is just in the, the subdivision regulations, in a very orderly way, uh, that for minor flats, which is a flat that doesn't go to the planning commission properly, or if it's three lots or less, uh, we need a letter of agency, water availability letter, sewer availability letter, and a high intensity soil map, as I mentioned a little while ago. Uh, improvements to substandard roads, uh, this is some, some clarification, part which is, is comes from our zoning code, thanks recently, there's some, this goes in our, our zoning code, there's some, uh, infrastructure requirements, uh, for, for a lot, that relates to lot sizes. Uh, A, here clarifies that county roads less than eighteen feet width, or subject to improvements along the project's front edge, so if you go through the major subdivision on a fifteen foot wide road, you need to upgrade until then with an eighteen fifty, that's what that's saying, that the developer's expense. Uh, then B, uh, we have a, so a requirement here, we borrowed this from Wilson County, uh, what it says is a minimum of center term length acceleration, the acceleration length will be mandatory for more than fifty residential lots from the codes to access the existing road system by intersection. Um, the requirement shall buy all the codes with required road access, that's what that's saying, is if you access two different roads, um, that would be required, uh, to, to the first additional length. Uh, that's always a question, uh, when it comes to, uh, the middle of the century, and sometimes the chapter seven, if it is needed, sometimes it's fine, uh, Wilson County, and their regulation is very careful with that fifty, fifty lot threshold. Um, and then again, clarifies all through the surrounding, the developer's expense, and they have to acquire right away, make sure that they, that those are included in. Uh, road improvements in areas of chronic flooding, so this is a new set of regulations here, part of that is specific, interesting, those regulations. Basically, construction of roads in the floodplain tends to create long-term maintenance issues for the county, and safety issues for residents, and so the following apply. Uh, new roads are built in the floodplain, so if you build a road through the floodplain, it has to be, the road itself has to end up two feet above the one where your floodplain elevation. Uh, B, uh, if you're going to connect, uh, a new road to a road that's in the floodplain, you have to elevate that road you're going to connect to. Um, so you keep, there it is, an option in there now, which shall be, it's supposed to be to elevate the road, you might have noted by the section, or provide alternate road access, and so they can go to somewhere else, um, and kind of new road access. But if they want to hang in there, um, when there's floodplain that, they go through. C, charges the county engineer with compliance, uh, you, you show our profiles, elevation of the area, so if you flood, and no rise elevation, and no rise to the certification has to be provided. And then D, uh, it fills the route by the county engineer, um, uh, to bring it to the required elevation, uh, the field can't approach it on the floodplain, if you can't, you can't approach it on the floodway, that's a federal regulation as part of the flood insurance program. Uh, and they can't talk to the plodding as well, they can demonstrate that, uh, with their, their calculations, and then the field has to be protected by complete inspection. Uh, five, the, the thing down at the bottom there is just, just clarifying that the floodplain requirements of the zoning resolution and the subdivision regulations mentioned there. Um, there's a, this is related to, uh, critical lots, uh, proposed grading on critical lots, correct my point there? Uh, and what this wording that's added here says is critical lot, this shall not be approved if the proposed grading will result in slopes two, one, or greater, or falling in building lot. And so what that's saying in this theory is you're going to be grading in, the slope can't be greater than, than, than two to one, uh, or the county engineer says you can't prove it. H, retaining walls, uh, this is in subdivision regulations, uh, sorry, the zoning code verbatim, um, so if your retaining walls full figure higher, has to be, uh, designed to be by a professional engineer, I think this is in the building code as well. And so a part of, a part of there that the, the retaining wall is meant to be a durable material that doesn't rot, and fall apart. Um, during our study session here, we had a bit of discussion, uh, Mr. Stroll pointed out several things related to, uh, the wording of this, that can be clarified a little bit, and as we discussed it over the course of the, the study session, the green, whether there were some changes that were made to this here, we requested this for clarification, that this, this is the version that, that we voted on tonight. Uh, the substance of it is still the same, but it's just clarification. Um, so secondary entrance is required, is what, is what it's saying there, uh, but if you do thirty or more lots, uh, if you do thirty or more lots, then you have to buy a secondary, a second entrance, uh, into, into the development. Uh, can't utilize the roads to terminate and undevelop piece of property, it's not proposed, but part of the proposed development. All entrance roads shall be county road standards, you're paying the regulations, that's what that's saying is, where, for how you build that second entrance, saying that it's a, it's a county road, uh, or at least has to be obstructed to that, those standards, into private or something like that. Um, we got a question from, uh, from a, a member of the development community about spacing of intersections here, uh, on these secondary entrances, I would say, in my, in my judgment, that's covered by our road design standards, and one of our entities, and, and this document, subdivision regulations, I highlighted that text there. Uh, what, what it says is that the spacing of intersections, um, the, the intersections can't be, uh, less than two hundred feet from one another, unless they're both, both, uh, both, uh, intersections are cul-de-sacs, in which case they can be a hundred and twenty five feet. And so I think that, that, that covers that question for this secondary entrance item here. Um, burning on site comes up as a question and issue from time to time.
Devolution plan, again we have notes on there as best as report. And the demolition plan is pretty fine before carrying it down. They did turn in a site plan, really the only difference between the site plan and, I'll talk back and forth here. This is the concept plan, this is the site plan. There's a little difference, it's a little bit, you see there's lots of the tree plantings right here. It's because there's already trees there, there's already trees located here, so that's where our state comments. We had some initial comments as well back here related to trackings of those of the vendors as well. They did provide some of the grading plan. You see there's a detention pond to the rear, it's going to capture all this impervious surface. And it'll be, as you can see, this is one of those land states, water quality license. And so it'll capture the water that runs off of the site, it is filtered out and discharged through the natural drain at the back of the property. They did provide a photometric lighting plan. Going back to the, where it says it's surrounded by another, a piece of property, so there's not likely to be any lighting impact. But they just require one of our code. So they did buy a photometric lighting plan with lighting issue and all that stuff. Architectural plans are exactly the same as well, it's about a technical condition, it's part of the reselling. Our comprehensive plan calls this, calls that, this is a rural place type here on Third W. Generally a residential context, but along major state highways, it is acceptable to go to, for these kinds of neighborhood type commitments. For some, for some uses. Drainage, they have provided a safe construction plan, drainage calculations as part of this application. Again, there's a potential basin constructed to the east of the property, the rear part. They have provided a stormwater maintenance inspection agreement, which is helping ensure that the pond is taken care of in the future. That I can record that with registered deeds. And they've provided drainage calculations here. And so, so basically this is the storm event, two through one hundred year events. And as part of those events, here's how much water leaves the site with a detention pond in place. Here's how much was left of the site prior to. Maybe because there's no detention now, it's mostly impervious with gravel and that kind of thing. And so, you see across all storms, there's a significant decrease in the cubic feet per second of water that leaves the site. Is that what you want to see? You always want to see that number be negative. Roads, again, you see this is a big thing around it. It's located along US Third One W, which is a major arterial roadway. There is an existing access point, so there's no new driveway construction. But T-DOT is likely to require a drive permit. And so they will need to give a T-DOT to get that permit. If T-DOT requires it, we will require some kind of confirmation before we release permits, then T-DOT may consult it afterwards. This is a vision that's taken back during the reselling process, to keep them happy with the property. This is just a little street view here of the subject property. And you see the tree that we're talking about there?
Yeah.
Next steps, after the site plan is agreed by the planning commission, a construction plan is expanded by a county engineer. They'll schedule a pre-destruction meeting with the county staff. Joe Phillips, our former manager, too, running with. And then, you know, once the state issues all the permits, those are some coverage, the drive permit for T-DOT. Then they'll issue a T-DOT, they'll get that maintenance permit, Mr. Phillips will issue that. They can take permits with demolishing structure, grade of the site, get the pond in, all things they have clear. And so Mr. Chairman, there's example motions on the screen, so we're deciding with example motions, I'm sorry, example conditions A through D. A is, construction plans have to be approved by the state's construction permit. Land service permit must be obtained by construction. And they give their state permits, and then the demolition and mass, that's just, I don't know if you can address with reference. Number two is to deny this request. I would note though, there are no grounds for any denial that's happened, found here, all the kind of forms you've had. And number three would be to defer to you guys' initial information. So that concludes my presentation.
We will now take comments from the audience. And this is not a question and answer period, just to, to let everybody know, this is a comment from the public. So do we have anybody signed up?
I think the folks that are signed up, or signed up for the ride, I was going to point that out. Mr. Gentry, I know, has signed up for Hunter Ridge here. Joey, can't get that last name, but that is I think, Danielle Graham, Sheila Allen, got signed up for Danielle Graham.
I'm Sheila Allen, but I'm here for...
You're here for the Hunter Ridge?
Yes.
Alright, so we have no comments. Do we have any questions from Mr. Chairman on this project? Mr. Phillips?
Just for clarification. The drawings show the existing building is a little over, or just under a hundred and five thousand square feet. From my calculations of the plans, the mini storage. The area that it encompasses is about fifty-six thousand square feet. However, on those drawings, it appears that the mini storage is taking up the same amount of area as the existing building does. So I'm a little confused, just with the discrepancy in square footage.
That's the first of the folks who agree on that one. Everybody agree there?
Brad Warmer, is that what you're asking, the square footage of the buildings?
Yeah, the existing versus what's planned. The square footage of the area of impervious ground.
Don't know that off the top of my head, but we are meeting the minimum requirement of accounting, as well as if there is any additional areas that is included, as far as ponds there is still, make sure that additional pavement effect and stormwater or anything. And the surrounding areas, that helps.
So is that, is that linked to the, the impervious that's already there, is that what you're...
Yeah, I mean, the building showed, the existing building showed a hundred and four thousand seven hundred and twenty-four square feet. And if you look at the dimensions of the mini storage, including the paved areas, it works out to fifty-six thousand square feet, almost half. But the drawings appear to show the same area that's covered.
And visually, I think you're right, not in the technical analysis of the plans. But yes, so overall, not that much difference between the closed and existing, except visually, they didn't have it.
A follow-up on that, I heard up there, it appears the existing building is abandoned, is that true?
I'm not sure, but I'm going to look at it, because I'm going to go over this, I think it's the, every time.
It's a good question. There was a tenant that went out there for a reason, and I think after a reason, it was approved, and they had it moved out.
I have to ask, I'm a little confused. So, the original, the existing building is going to be demolished, is over a hundred thousand square feet?
It's not less.
You don't, you don't think that's right? Okay, so, the long and short of it is, the buildings they plan on building are, are they required?
Right, and the dimensions of those buildings are what's on the concept plan.
So we think a hundred and four thousand is in there?
Okay.
Any other questions with the, with the project? Okay, we, we have our, our example motions. I would entertain a motion at this time.
I'll wait to, number one, to approve with those caveats, A through D.
So why didn't you, they grab a motion, did you grab a second?
I'll say it.
Second by Mr. Stroll. Any questions on the motion?
That'll, that could be a stat about, yeah, the, the construction, so the site plan, the final, like, standard for the site plan, lets them go to construction or something, and so they, they're, 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 they're initial, initial. And so the building's being torn out, so it really doesn't matter if it's ten thousand square feet or a hundred or whatever, it's, it's being torn out. But that's, that's what it is, that we'll have a great complaint.
Mr. Sidney, can you do the roll call though, please?
Belcher?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Hissa?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Goodness, unanimous, thank you. Alright, item three, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, this is a Hunter's Ridge, conceptual lot layout, civil management is acting, represented by county industry. This piece of property is located along Longmont Pike and New Shackle Island Road. It's owned by a rural residential at this time, forty thousand square foot, in the long silence. And the recent settlement residential was that's located within the city of Anderson, those are the growth boundary. And so if it was outside that earth growth boundary, it would be a hundred thousand square foot, so it'd be one of the, it would be a rental rural reservation. This proposal contains sixty-eight lots on a hundred and twenty-four, one zero seven acres. And lots range in size from forty thousand, two hundred and fifty square feet, to six hundred and eight thousand four hundred. Utilities for this piece of property, the proposal is to have these lots secured, by White House Utility District, so it would be on safety systems. Public water and also something provided by White House Utilities. And electric will be provided by CEMC, Capital Electric Leadership Corporation. This is from our county subdivision regulations about conceptual lot layouts, it's a language area where we used to call these sketch flats. The first step of the process was called a sketch flat, and there was a load. And so there was a bit of confusion, it came to vesting rights and those kinds of things. So the planning commission went through this, which is kind of industry standard now, I guess you might say, for local governments. Essentially, it's adapting to come in for the project, and it has public infrastructure. Get a review, get feedback, comments from the planning commission, take questions, and work on their concept. But it isn't not voting that item. And so this, 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 this file has been submitted, and with all of our requirements. And it's, it's on the agenda, this is for the schedule, I think it'll vote it. This is the subject property, you can see, as I mentioned, I'm not sure if I understand where this property is. New Shackle Island Road, Longmont Pike, Beach, Beach High School here. This is rural park development, center construction at this time. New Shackle, Voltyr Park Department, it's right here. And there's another church here, and it's staying in the state here right now, but it's a missionary Baptist church, it's located here. Turn on the flood layer. You do see a good, good portion of the property, particularly across the street, because it covers the floodway, floodway there, from Grease Creek. And crosses the road in some places as well, floodway does. So for clarification, everybody might not know, this was a, this was complicated, but the blue is the bottom of the rear floodway, that has no regulatory effect. The red is the one hundred year floodway, zone A E, and the hatch area, it's floodway. I'm not making sure if it's live, floodway. If you imagine not accurate, we'll, we'll say that, maybe that's on the assessment side, they're going to make a string on there, but it's for informational purposes. Figma hasn't amended this area here. We received an official law back, this portion of this, this property has been amended out of the floodway. And I do think as well, that it's probably, probably not totally accurate in, in this area as well. And so we, we need absolutely accuracy, we rely on the actual Figma maps on that other side. So this is a conceptual lot layout, it's provided by the applicant. You can see two entrances proposed, on New Shackle Island Road and Longmont Pike. She too, something I asked for was examination of the property, of the, of the site. And you can see that a lot of it is quite, quite steep. So the, the orange area, what that indicates is slopes in excess of twenty-five percent. And so these are, these are particularly steep areas. Typically, what would, you know, on a subdivision of this type, those areas at minimum would need to be kept in a, in a, in a, essentially like a steep, a steep slope, Eastman, Jack Redd or something. Those require that those areas, the steep slopes in excess of twenty-five percent, should be, should be protected as, as they have through open space or as an easement on the line, as a non-buoyable area. There was a third page that was added, as, on the, the recent middle as well. And so to toggle back and forth, what, what this does, as you see, there's a connection channel, this sheet up the Longmont Pike. And there's a, a return here as well, that eliminates that connection, it pulls, pulls everything back away from, from the Voltyr Fire Department. And this is a significant, significant deal here. But, but as you can see there, it is, it's still pretty, pretty steep. I believe this, this, this version, but I think it takes a lot of handout and difficulty for lots.
Which is still in excess of what we...
Right, 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 yes, at the second, and how, how this would comply, as, as is shown here, necessarily. Now, that, that said, and I talked to Mr. Inger at the time of the day, and I didn't really take much note of this third sheet, to be honest with you. When it was reset, it wasn't necessarily requested. But it did, that's the point of this process, is to get alternate, blocking out and pushing up and down, bringing in different versions. So I think what was proposed right here is to have a secondary entrance come through here. That's what they're doing, so they've eliminated this connection here. And not, or, or here, they've eliminated this other access, and they're along Longmont Pike, providing a second entrance right here.
Through the church parking lot, but they said they gave it to them.
Right, right, and so, so I don't know whether this would comply with the document necessarily, but, but anyway, it's for discussion. Panis County Plan. This is a suburb, quite like, towards the south of this, this area right, right here. And up north, it's, it's a high growth area, I believe is what the county plan calls that. The South, South part right here, so the, the, the city leadership, it's like that, it's a, it's a suburb. About a little above, it's the residential, one building in purple there. Roads, the subdivision proposes to construct a new terminal road network with primary access along New Shackle Island Road. And a secondary entrance off Longmont Pike. As I mentioned, there's a, there's a sheet added, and we, we can take a closer look at that, as well. What's proposed on that, or what's shown on that other sheet. Generally, you know, what we say on, on a lot of things from the statute perspective, public road build, county standards is, is desirable over the gravel driveways and that kind of stuff. At least five acre farm coves that they do, they're, the emergency services guys can't get back there, and that kind of thing. Cycle constraints are, are, there's a good bit of analysis that needs to be done at the preliminary class stage for this, for this project, it is pretty steep. And so there's significant cycle strengths in terms of floodway, and, and the steep slopes that we looked at at the preliminary class stage. And both Longmont Pike and New Shackle, they're both, they're both state roads, so the T-DOT road connections will be required. Drainage development will require legal state permits, post-coverage, day rap, and then state, state drive permits, as I mentioned. Be, be hard to know, hard to imagine that, that detention can necessarily be accommodated on a site like this, it seems to be. But that's something that we will look at at the preliminary class stage, when they turn in that full set of construction drawings at that stage. Utilities and fire protection, there are several hydro stubbings necessary for this subdivision. The fire protection is to be provided by the relevant Voltyr Fire Department, New Shackle Voltyr Fire Department. The lot should be served by water, served by white action utilities. Next steps, it is even, as I mentioned there, there's no vote, this is for discussion. Mr. Inger can be called, if he is signed up to speak, to talk about his plans, to pull them up on the screen and look at them, and then walk through them. But next steps will be, delivering the final five, approval from the planning commission. Have that preliminary class status, only the construction plans for road, drainage, drainage calculations, road erosion protection, seven, twelve, that's all that. This is a non-voting item, as I mentioned, presented for input, no vote should be taken. As a vision, I think, there's a sheet here, I think there are two people that are signed up to speak on, on this side, Mr. Gentry and Ms. Sheila Allen are signed up to speak on.
Mr. Chairman, will you be of assistance, Alan, for me?
Sure.
If you'd like to speak, Ms. Allen.
Chairman? Okay, I'm Sheila Allen, and I live at thirty-two seventeen Longmont Pike. And I'd like to say thank you all for letting me speak here tonight. I may have sort of jumped the gun on this, I don't know, but I just heard this today, this meeting. And I do have a personal interest in this, and I spoke with Mr. Gentry, and he was very gracious to me today, and I'm talking with him, and I believe several things can be worked out. Mr. Chairman, it's good to see you again, too. My property is the one that's probably going to be most affected by what these guys do. The Hunter property is the only thing between my property and New Shackle Island Road. It takes in the entire corner of Longmont Pike. The entrance to my land, if you can pull that up, it might help everybody understand what I'm saying here. First of all, Hunter Ridge, that's a family's name, they get real good on that. Their lots started with forty-five, coming all the way around to the back side, over to that secondary entrance. Let's see, well, not quite that far, but down to the creek to lot thirty-six. All of that borders mine. I love how they have laid out this, this proposal, the size of the lots. They're doing sixty-eight acres on a hundred and twenty-four acres back there. They're not trying to, you know, put a house every quarter acre, so I do love their plan. I love how the homes will be along the ridge, and then everything is going to be pretty much kept, and it's going to border my land. I live in the middle of about two hundred and fifty acres back there, and Galwayburg doesn't have anything on me, I have a most gorgeous view. And we bought that land back in nineteen seventy-seven, and I, it's home. And I think, I came here to say one thing, but I think I have come up with just a whole new thing. I do like what these guys are doing there, and I know you're not voting on anything tonight, but I would like to say that. Being a landowner back there, I like what these guys are doing. Now, what I came here to say has to do with the survey. Like I say, we've owned that property before since nineteen seventy-seven, and it's the old veto place. And my driveway is a road, it's a quarter mile long coming back to my property. My property lies behind the fire hall out there. And I think that it's known as a veto place, I think since God made the land, I don't know. But that road back there is an old county roadhead that ran from Longmont Pike all the way over to Hunter's Lane. Back behind me, it crosses my land and two other pieces of property coming back there. And the survey is a little concerning, but I've talked with, with Cali and Clay both. And, you know, if I have a recourse, they, you know, they're going to work with me on this. If I have a legal recourse, I'm going to come to that, but then I would deal, of course, with the hunters. Because that is the only right way we have into that property, it's not a right way, and it's not an easement. I own that land, according to my survey. So that was my concern, but I just, and I wanted to go on record as that being a concern. But have you seen what these guys are doing and they're planning? That land is still being developed out there somewhere, and I know a lot of my neighbors are not liking that, but it's happening, it's going to happen. And what these guys are trying to do, I think, looks like a, a, a great thing. If living there, if I have to face that, if I can keep them calm with those doctors, and I don't want them tearing down every tree. We've already had that conversation. But I like what they're doing. They're not trying to just cram in a bunch of things, I think this is going to be a nice, nice subdivision if it comes to be. And if I haven't worked with anybody, I, I like these guys, so. But I just mainly wanted to go on record as to the survey being a little iffy, in my opinion, and, but we'll work that out, so. That's why I'm here, just to nicely say that, and hopefully everyone understands, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Allen. And we did speak earlier today about what we proposed here. And her driveway, when we surveyed this, her driveway approaches across the line. Surveyor says driveway, she's had driveway everything since nineteen seventy-eight. I would imagine there's some sort of bad possession. That makes it a little out of our habit, but that's in fact of our lots, if, if we get approved on this, we don't have any problem, we're straightening that out. So I would, maybe she'll all, so, but I would flag she brought that. And I haven't done a conceptual lot layout here, which I didn't know, but this was more of a back and forth conversation. What, my intention was to show you guys the plan, and then before I went to preliminary class, I wanted to know what was important to y'all. Go this way, go that way, do this, don't do that. So that's why I was here, and that's why you got the, the third sheet and the recent middle. If you wouldn't mind, Josh, we can go to that third sheet. So when I first had my pre-application conference with Josh, that's pretty much what I brought in. It, it had the one entrance on New Shackle, it did not have the green access driveway for the church. But we had the fifty-six lots, the two yard acre lots, and then the fifty-four, forty thousand plus minus square foot lots in there. That's what we came in with. And immediately Josh, he had some concerns over going over thirty lots, and that's just to add a second access point on Longmont Pike. That resulted in the initial submit, which is the first sheet of this, where we showed the road going all the way out, time and across an access to Beach High School. And talking with some member of the community, and just knowing the area, we know that that area is, it's the dirt machine, so we really would rather not take that road out there. That's what led us to this alternate solution for an emergency access drive, which I think, based on some of the regulations we'd seen before the meeting... based on some of the regulations we'd seen before the meeting, would meet the criteria because it's emergency access. I think with the gray language change, I don't think it would make sense for us for our road through the church to that. And I'll explain our intent here, we have the developments where we have a primary entrance, and then we just have an emergency access entrance for ambulance, fire, police. It'll have a gate, an automatic gate on it where they swat their sire and the gate opens, there's no keys, there's no getting out of the truck, pull up, swat, go in. So what we intended here was for that to be the secondary access, we could eliminate that connection to Long Hollow. Because if you look at the slope analysis, there's just not another place on that east front of Long, New Shackle for us where we can get a road down. We've worked extensively with the church, we've met them a couple of times, looking at what their drainage problems are, what their growth plans were. And one of the things we've worked out was, I think, when they elevated New Shackle, how many years ago? They left the church entrance down on the end floodway. New Shackle there, I think, is four, four and a half feet above even the five hundred year floodway. So it's out of the flood, and I, and I agree with your maps, they showed, your momma showed us that the road was out, and I think it's four point, four point four feet above the five hundred and five feet above the hundred year floodway. So what we proposed was, hey church, we will build a brand new entrance, and then we will connect your parking lot to our entrance above that hundred year floodway. They got stuck in there, they made twenty ten with the floods, some cars did. So, and then they also got some growth plans, they want, they need some little parking, they need some children's facility. So the orange line was us looking at what we could, what we could donate to them by doing their expansions. Initially, we were shutting off their access, which is really our new road, but with the secondary access requests, Josh, we, we were going to leave their existing access, but leave that gate. So that, that was, that was going to be the emergency secondary access. So I would like some feedback, I don't think I'll just pass this, and it affects me even at this point, so I'd like some, love some feedback on that. If you look closely, there's a red dash line, these lots are, the mess we have for size. What that red dash line shows is a forty foot front setback, and then a one hundred foot building on the road. That's big enough for most, even custom builders, to put a good sized house on there. These are a hundred feet wide, actually a hundred and four to a hundred and fourteen foot wide, accommodate side loaded garages on as many as possible. So when you look at tree clearing, based on this layout, we are trying to stay back from the entrance, protect aesthetics of Long Hollow Hollow, especially. Really what you should see, what we'd like for you to see, is just our entrance drive going outside the church. That should be where you see these houses, or see the road that need to change. During winter, we'll see some things with trees, during summer, they should be, you know, mostly hidden. So our intention was to design this with the forms of the land, the top for the land, not to impose our will and knock mountain tops off and things like that. That's what we tried to do, and nobody even needs to park us for second access, I'd love some more feedback on that, because I would greatly prefer not throughout the Long Hollow. And Ms., Ms. Allen's access, I think, is twenty feet wide or so, so we can, we couldn't improve that for her to be able to get back out that way. Their signal that comes to the south of us. So I think that's kind of the basic information of the property, although I pretend that we're trying to accomplish, and I just, I'd love some feedback. Help us, have a wish right there.
Okay, well, let's see, let's see what we have there. Does anybody have any questions? Pardon?
There's no one else on there.
No, that's it.
Go ahead, Mr. Miller. Just sharing my opinion on it, especially with this new item that was passed, the secondary entrance. I don't personally believe that it would be in the best interest of safety to have it going through that church parking lot, as shown. The entrance to that church area and the entrance to the main subdivision to me is too close together. That traffic can get pretty backed up there, especially during rush hour, if there was a service going on at that church, and we have emergency vehicles trying to fly through that area. I think we're, we're creating a hazard, that's just my opinion on that one. I'm not sure I fully understand the concerns about voting to Long Hollow that you were starting to express. To me, that looked like a great option, because it's not directly at that intersection, and it's going to split that traffic coming out of the subdivision, kind of two different directions, and not necessarily funneling it all to one, one specific location. So those are just kind of my initial thoughts looking at this, and I had looked at prior, and to your point, with the, some of the adjustments that have been made to that plan and improved in the interest of safety, again, we want to make sure that these entrances can accommodate all kinds of things, so we just want to hold those to county standard, coming in and out of subdivisions. But again, funneling all that traffic for, for so many homes, one subdivision coming out of that very small area to me is, is an uncertainty, but. Thank you.
And the concern with Long Hollow Hollow was just approximately that, that dirt sheet, just trying to stay back away from that. That's really, from a community standpoint, I know that's important. So that, that was, that was, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Miller, go ahead, Mr. Strong.
Talk to me a little bit about, there's a park now because of the number of lots and turn lanes coming off the main roads. I mean, talk to me about that, I mean, there's a group there right next to the road, that's going to be an expensive expansion, but, you know, the evening, so maybe you'll be talking about that?
Yes, sir. That's, yes, we just showed it over there, we looked at the culvert size that we, we can be done there. Any improvements on Long Hollow, that's, that's something we're willing to do.
Okay.
And then sure, on the New Shackle side, there's an existing turn lane, if it needs to be extended slightly, we're approaching it as well. Concerns inside about that.
Got you, got you. Right in front of Beach High School, turn lanes, so, it's already a turn lane. There's not a turn lane, but, yes, so there is, there is.
I think that, I'll say it. Is there? No, accelerations, accelerations, yes, those are, those are fine as well, yes.
Good.
Commissioner Miller.
This is in my district, and I've literally charged my phone twice today when this came out. And I did not have one single person that reached out to me that had anything positive to say about any of this. There's flooding issues, I mean, you know, we have a Facebook page, Facebook page called Protect a Store at Shackle Island, and this is not protecting historic Shackle Island at all. We're going to have a lot of opposition to this. And, I mean, to me, everybody wants to talk about public safety, these roads are already overwhelmed. There's way too many vehicles coming in and out, especially during school time, it's so dangerous. And this is only going to add to, I mean, you know, we had that whole ramped up discussion in our commission meetings for the past month, and this is just going to, it's just making fifty homes worse, putting the same homes in this area. I mean, I, I think it's going to be a huge public safety issue, and there's going to be wrecks, and, I mean, that's, that intersection is horrible. Like, it backs up during school time, it backs up all the way, I mean, way past center seat downs through that way. So I don't know how we're going to get people hanging out for the end of this, the topography is terrible, it's super steep, there's water. That poor church, they flooded multiple times, not just in twenty ten. I think it's a horrible plan.
Go ahead, Mr. Miller.
I have to agree with Ms. Miller's comments, I live in this area also. And I don't know if you try driving through this intersection, New Shackle or Long Hollow, either during school, going into session, school coming out of session, or Sunday mornings.
You're a rich man.
Yeah, rush hour also. If you leave on New Shackle Island Road on that, and you want to go north, and it's during any of those times, you're not going to be able to do it. I mean, it is, it's, you know, and, and I'll just say this, being one of the new guys on the, the commission. You know, I think it's been bad that the planning commission up to this point, and the county commission's up to this point, knowing that their workload is immense. But that the traffic flow in this area hasn't been addressed by now, I realize that's not their fault at all, but I remember when, you know, I don't know, a couple of decades ago, it was discussed the Long Hollow corridor plan to improve the traffic specifically at this intersection. And nothing's happened, and, you know, where it stands right now, and I don't know what changes or modification that you might be able to do, do it. But I don't think I could support this if it comes up for a vote, just knowing what I know about the traffic here. Like, including the floodplain issues and the graves, you know, and the topography of the land.
Commissioner Miller.
And my next question was for actually for Mr. Gentry, I saw there, you're trying to get sewer through, I guess, the door issue. Where is the sewer, where were you coming, I mean, coming off, because I know that there's no sewer down in that road.
There's sewer on Long Hollow Pike, there's a manhole.
At the school?
Sorry.
The, the school's on sewer, correct?
Correct, at least if you, there's a sewer line on the south side of Long Hollow Pike, which is a manhole, a few hundred feet of New, of New Shackle. And our sewer goes down the hill, and runs out the back of Long Hollow, and it can grab into that sewer line.
It's going to be expensive.
Yeah.
Really expensive.
Yeah.
And then my, my next comment is just, you know, once again, the, the traffic is, is horrendous, I mean, it took me, I, I, I've literally gone in, it took me fourteen minutes to get out of my road onto Long Hollow. One time, I mean, it's been like fourteen minutes, two minutes, I mean, it's already a huge issue, but I'm afraid that they're going to be adding crosses on that intersection if this subdivision goes in.
Mr. Strong. Yes, sir, could you explain, address the, the slope? This, this area is, from what I'm looking at, it's presented to me, slope is saving twenty-five percent. Now, it goes well below that, there, well below that. How do you, how do you see your vision mitigating that, that slope? Because even if I'm not speaking, Josh talked this before, he thought the rare and the fifteen percent slope of lot is considered critical. So, and then there's requirements for that, so, you know, the sewer, it leads, I know where that's going, you don't have that line on it, but talk to me, talk to us a little bit about this slope, because this is ugly, safety wise, please.
Yes, sir. Uh, we walked it, we shared it, sorry, that was, that was difficult. I'm sorry, myself. Never, user. I don't know if you can see the red line, where we're talking about kind of stopping the houses there, the dash line. There are, thank you, Josh, there are a lot of steep slopes that we've created, but unbuildable slope protection easements, things like that. And we'll leave as much of it out of the back, you know, if we want to stop these lots short, y'all can throw those to be, you know, in space, we can do that too. But this road will be graded in, this, this top here will be flattened some, give us a buildable area that's outside of the twenty-five percent slopes. Same thing with this, this ridge line here, will be start about in this area to be able to get the road down in time to get back out to Long Hollow. So it'll, it'll be stair stepped down, we can accommodate building areas, and that's because a lot of lots are a little bit wider than our needs, and we can transition that as well. Does that answer your question?
That does, that helps me visualize this, this particular, again, I think the word has been utilized, most of all, it's very expensive to do it.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Miller.
This opinion sale, I'm guessing.
Did you just explain?
Opinion, opinion on it, approval, I mean, what, what's opinion on it?
Uh, approval of plan, a great improvement.
Just one more question, so, from what we just said, so between the red line and the road is where the houses will be intended?
That's a forty foot front setback, and then a hundred feet house depth footprint, kind of a, the rest would be yard and, okay. The rest of it, if you have trees, un, you know, undisturbed, and if, you know, determine some distance where we, some of the plants that were disturbed down here, we can do that as well. Thank you for that. Yes, sir. And I know I got a few comments back and forth, but I didn't really, I didn't get to ask questions of, I understand, and, and, Mr. Miller, I have driven out there, and I tried to avoid it at those times, because it is so difficult, I do. I don't know if, when schools are designed, y'all get a say in traffic access flow, anything like that, and I know that's frustrating, because they get that over, I would, you know, it's the same thing, they use roads as their track. And it's, it's unfortunate, and I wish we could come up with a way to, we've got what they're playing, I'm sure we could come up with it, I just don't want them to, but. That's, that's frustrating, so I, I get it, and I understand, sixty, sixty homes is going to add to, it's going to be difficult at times, but it won't, it, it won't be a noticeable change in any of the traffic flow. Because it's sixty homes out of, you know, fifty thousand, or whatever it is that come through here. I, I'm agreeing with you, it's going to be difficult at three times, but I don't think they're going to have a negative impact, you know, just a few things that they add. But, but your concerns, no, I've, I've shared. One thing I would love to ask of you and, and Ms. Miller as well, the way I have it shown, that was the way I came up with how I developed this, I would love some feedback on y'all. What you would prefer to see, the way I'm doing this, is not what you want. The Hunter's, uh, Hunter Sisters have owned this, I'm not sure how many decades they've owned this, and they're, they're, they're ready to sell it, they're ready for to move on. They listed this one, we did approach them and give them a contract, they listed it with Carmouth, I believe, going in there. So we went and talked to them, and that's why we're here, they want to sell it, they want to see something done with it. So I really would like, in the absence of, please don't be any, what would you prefer to see?
We got someone there with a meeting to ask the residents, I mean, they, they show up, you know what I mean, like, they, I'm a six year, or sixth generation native of Shackle Hollow, I get the second generation, and, you know, they love their community, and I don't even know that, because of the, 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 what you've been involved in out there. But these people would love to give you feedback, yes, or they would say, you know, but never in there, and, I mean, that's, that's how I feel, but I, I know that, I know that some of them think that there. So, I mean, would they be open to doing a community meeting, I would attempt, I would, I could definitely, you know, help get the work out.
Sure. We haven't had one, because I really wanted to get y'all's feedback first, that's, that's why. And I would love to take some workable feedback from y'all, right, go to this meeting and say, we offered this, we heard that, we're back with this, so that we've got one iteration done before we, you know, we really start getting into the, the submittals with you guys. So, and, and I understand, everybody would love for it to just stay like it is, but in the absence of that, what, I would love to know what y'all would prefer to see.
Just a question, what do you, or do you know what the minimum density of this would be to make it, you know, feasible for you guys to do this? Like, the minimum number, where, you know, you have, you have cut out, or it's not available for you to do, because I know it's expensive.
It is, so that minimum number changes a bunch, places a bunch of implements, what road section you can use. You know, if we can use the state residential section, that's nice, but when you take a step, excuse me, one step past the community civil engineering, we can't do grass lined roads, I just, just down that hill. It'll blow everybody out, so we've got to build. So, we've got to build a full road section, at least up to get to the ridge, that'll handle the storm runoff. And we've talked to the church, we know there are pinch points, and we're, we are designing our site to fix a lot of that and alleviate other, and then, you know, get them out of the floodwater section, we're trying to, but, um, does that?
Kind of, um, you know.
So, there's just a lot of input, so if you guys say.
But I know it's a big question.
Yeah.
And you probably haven't had a piece of work back yet, and I'm not sure if you know, and I need to make my, in all things, but for the people there, the least amount of homes that you could put on here to still do, if that makes sense? I don't know if I'm asking the question correctly.
Yes, you, you, you may get into my question, what would you prefer to see, and your, your answer is the least number of houses. Yeah.
I mean, we're really, you know.
Sure. You know, and we, we have a different iteration, we want that hundred thousand square foot lots, and, um, you know, still having to build, you know, almost three quarters of a mile road, you just can't, and on these hills with the sewer and with the connections on it, you just can't do it that way. We've looked at a cluster, we've looked at a road that wanted to do that, uh, keep them a lot smaller, keep them stacked right on top of the ridge. Again, uh, getting back down to Long Hollow, uh, is, we're kind of catching some on that, but I didn't really think there was a trade off, uh, and there may be one there, you know, just developing a smaller portion of the site, which certainly, you know, thirteen acres, we got it on the ground. Yes, sir.
Talk to me a little bit about the stormwater drainage, uh, that, and as we're discussing this tonight, I believe this is gonna be, that's gonna be a critical area of discussion that people will answer to, especially community input, I'm just throwing it out there, that's something, I mean, last month, we were going through, remember that, the engineers, about still fixing drainage problems for like ten years, and, uh, and that's probably a lot of that that I can't find in the last week, and it's taken, and so, I would like to at least present to you that I think a, when I'm storm runoff, detailed plan, uh, or engineers are involved, it's gonna be well worth your time to, to have it, to present at a community meeting, because I, I, that would be a concern, right? That'd be a concern to me if I was responsible, if my need, you know, somebody's deed names on the deeds of the church here, that's gonna be important, you know, how do we know that this is not gonna be where all the water's gonna go, come out and fix the bridges and everybody, I mean, that's about what you could talk us through.
That's early on, too. That's very helpful, to know, knowing that meeting, to have that, that answer. I, I do feel comfortable, the engineers have already worked through quite a bit, and I feel comfortable with control so far, but having that answer, when they start asking that question, that's very good feedback.
Just a question, I see if you thought about it and why you might not work, and I see the towpath lines along New Shackle, and realizing that there is a deep ditch there, but did you consider having the outlet to New Shackle opposite of the drive into Long Hollow Church? And unfortunately, maybe requiring a traffic block there, to where, you know, road going onto the property based on this large six hundred thousand square foot lot, no one would see many houses in the development whatsoever, maybe they don't, you know, on the road description, the way it's laid out, but it's basically just a road leading into the neighborhood where the neighborhood is several hundred feet off of New Shackle. But, you know, coming opposite of that entrance to the church, wanting to get to further away from intersection along Hollow and New Shackle, the traffic does pack up at that point, I believe, uh, but, you know, short of buying more land, who would prefer to go south? You know, taking it as far south as you could, it might be a consideration.
And we did look at every possible question to connect up there. If we line that up and put a three or one side slope to tie in, there's sixty or seventy feet of rain, so we're looking at, if we can draw the road down, I have to decide, I have a slope of two hundred feet this way, two hundred feet this way, we believe we grew it all, trees and things everybody knows to see. That's the perfect spot to tie in, to come topographically, the least impactful was right there by church, which probably I would rather do.
Yeah.
I have a couple of questions, if I could, and please stay here because there'll be some discussion here. Uh, the, the road that ends, terminates on Long Hollow Pike, and I, I, I agree with several of the planning commission members who said that the picture number three, I really think violates the spirit of the current wildlife safety. So, I agree that the, the one, the one terminal should be on Long Hollow Pike, and it's opposite, at least like a fairly strong driveway to the high school. Uh, Mr. Sabbath, do you think that's going to trigger a, a direction signal? Being flying across the, the road? I mean, we're talking about sixty-eight houses here, we're talking about a ton of traffic.
We, we would make a traffic study, uh, as part of this when they get to the preliminary plat, so they're having a traffic study done, but I can't see any kind of stabilization being warranted on these new state roads, because they got to stop. The, um, T-DOT's not gonna shut down the state road for a subdivision street like this, it's just not something that they're gonna do.
Okay. Uh, I, I, many, many years ago, when I was a builder in the understate, all the flat land was gone, so this is kind of what I cut out of the hillside. We got really good at putting in thirty-six to forty inch RCP, storm rain lots, really expensive stuff, but it's what was required. Uh, we also got pretty good at gun eye, uh, bead dishes to, to let the water run in the open. Uh, I, I would, I know the word very, very began here, but I, I'm really concerned about knowing all the flooding around that intersection, all the traffic around that intersection, and adding so much road, hard state ropes, and, and anything else that would be in purpose, that we're gonna have a real challenge, an expensive challenge to stormwater runoff here. Um, I, I know you won't, you won't feel it, it's really deep into it, but I think, and here, again, going back to what Commissioner Holmes was saying, uh, with the potential of, of gun eye bead dishes, of possible, we probably don't have to use RCP here, but, some sort of a storm rain line, the less nets you give, especially doing it with a hundred thousand square foot lots, you've got a different road cross section, that you, you could accommodate that with, with gun eye bead dishes or something like that. Um, you know, right now, just sheer average lots per acre to go out there, one point six seven, you could do something, a, a hundred thousand square feet or above, if, you know, here again, the dollars have to work out, you'll, the, the less nets you give, the less road you're paying for. Right? Because the cross sections of a hundred thousand square foot lots, you're then again getting a reduction in cost there. Uh, you probably are, and still have to have some sort of detention or retention in some way, shape, or form, but it may not be as intense as it is with forty thousand square foot lots. Plus, I, I've been looking at the, the entire neighborhood around it, it looks like the smallest lot I saw adjacent to the property is about two and a half acres, and I saw lots as high as thirteen acres. Yeah, I, I think it's important to at least consider being consistent with the neighborhood you're, you're building in. Uh, I, I think the, the less density, rather than trying to maximize the, the lots per, for every type, I realize you have, you have, we're all around, even because of the, the steepness of the land, you, you might consider building something along that line, you'll have more resource in the ground, less problems, you know, less, less reverb services, and I think it'll fit in into the area, and, you know, I, I realize sixty-eight houses of traffic created by that, it's roughly seventy trips per day, that's a lot of trips per day, half of that would be a lot less, probably not only to matter all that much in the big scheme, but maybe a little, a little bit from the traffic, so if we get that far, so, those would be my recommendations.
And, and like you want, you know, we're not trying to maximize density, we're about half of what we did.
Sure.
Um, we, we did look at hundred thousand square foot lots, and still have to build a few of them at that burden, which, we still, and so I have to build thirty-eight hundred feet of road to get back there, just to be able to use the hundred, to get the hundred thousand square foot lots on the, on partial, it just, it, it just doesn't, doesn't work.
Yeah, I, I realize you're trying to do as little earthwork as possible, you're using the conventures of the land to create your roadways, and, and so, yeah, I, I appreciate all of that.
I, I've heard of the gun eye ditch, I will look into that, that's, it almost sounds fun on Sunday, too.
Yes, it is. Okay, uh, any other questions? Mr. Stroll.
Comment, uh, at the very beginning, as well, you, and I don't know, I don't swear, and I don't, yeah, and I've never, we, we don't know each other, I've never, never probably even talked to each other, but, uh, her comment, any concern about that access road, um, when you sit here and talk about, uh, things that, that could make this happen, if you want feedback from us.
Yes, sir.
I would say, and I'd like to ask that question, that, uh, could, could you mitigate any issues to make sure, I assume you own the property now, is that correct?
Yes, sir. I, as Miller asked, where is the potential for a plan?
Contingent, yes, sir. Uh, I think, I'm speaking for myself on this committee, so I believe protecting existing residents first, that's my top priority. Uh, I would like to make sure, speaking for myself only, that she is taking care of, ensuring that she has that access that she needs prior to moving forward on, on, on this development that's on here. So, I, I would just like to hear, you know, I, I would like to hear a commitment that, that you're, you're able to make sure that happens, if you set it here.
Yes, sir.
On the record.
Good, thank you.
Okay, any other questions, or statements or concerns? All right. Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Thank y'all, I appreciate it, Sean.
So, the chairman on that, just concluded. I'm voting out, they said, the preliminary plat, so we're not requesting anything that's not allowed outright as part of the design that they have at the time. Just one, I think there was a, I think there was a, a discussion about this one, or resettling, and maybe some kind of, or something, but that's not the case. Uh, you ready for the next item?
Yeah, this one.
I'm trying to, uh, last item, I can only record it in the, uh, C-13, uh, record business, is a landing brand, final plat, and I think I don't have it on here, required as a landing brand, vested, uh, final plat. Uh, Shell Brothers is the African developer on this, this property, uh, C-Bell, uh, C-15 is our group, is the project representative. This piece of property is located on Grand Mill Road, it's currently not a rural preservation. Um, this final plat, that's twenty-three lots, all sixty-six acres, or at least the preliminary plat, they actually, this is, this is nineteen lots, uh, I, I type on there, they're, they're, I think they're made of twenty-three, they're, they're original, the preliminary plat. Um, the flats are really utilized, the rural state cross section, which requires a larger lot size, a less infrastructure, uh, water's gas tank, it's ranked by the city district, Commonwealth Church, the electric power company here, uh, individual set of tanks, uh, bigger, uh, set of permits are required, but permanent state, this case, like, this property was approved back in August of twenty-three, and the preliminary plat was approved in November of this past year. Uh, this is the subject property, highlighted in blue there, uh, this is that preliminary plat, um, that was approved, um, with twenty-three lots, and the reason I got myself looking confused, there's just sacred, tiny lots here, uh, the reason that is, is that there's two five acre tracts that don't have to be plated, they're not part of the development, platting development, but is there some type of permits, and then there are two lots that were plated as part of the, one of this, and I'll, I'll show you the model home, and I'll, I'll show the platting, just, that makes my team for the final plats. Uh, this is approved preliminary plat, um, the, I will say, the final plat that they turned in is in substantial compliance with the preliminary plat, um, and the mention they did bring in a phase one of, of, of landing brand, uh, which was a good model preliminary plat, there were, this is a two lot mine or subdivision, that was, that was plating off, again, so they could build on a model home, and I believe they probably sold other, other lots there, too.
They're both, they're both a hundred thousand.
But that was a, yeah.
Could you, could you, could you repeat that last comment, I missed that, what about those two lots?
Those two lots were approved as part of the preliminary plat, and so, when you do a preliminary plat, you can do, you can plating the lots off, kind of as you wish, as part of the final plat, um, if they contain any infrastructure, then they have to have the infrastructure complete, right? And so, the remainder of the lots require a road, a bigger structure than the law, and so they had to remove the final plat and the remainder of the lots. Uh, but they were allowed to platen these two lots here, just so that no infrastructure could build as part of it, and so they were able to build mine or something, there. Uh, this takes the remainder, this is the final plat, phase two final plat. Uh, taking it down toward the road, we see, uh, Grand Mill Road here, these are the two lots that were, um, in the, in the preliminary plat initially, uh, that has been plated, building permits finished on those lots, and they're plating the remainder at this time, and so as you move, move to the south, see the road peanders, and that's one of the design requests that this body had, that they, they had done, turned out pretty good. Um, and moving down to the corner, second, they end here, there's the final plat. Uh, they did submit architecture as part of this, wasn't required, and this is not something they resold, they had an entitled right to subdivide the property as they did, and, uh, the architecture that they provided here, that may change if, if you guys want to ask Mr. Roy or Professor Shell Brothers about architecture, I'm sure they'd be glad to talk to you about it. But this is what started out with the preliminary plat application. Um, our, for our county's comprehensive plan, this is in the rural place type, so it's just right here on that line, this little jutted area here, um, and so, uh, this piece of property, along with the rest of the property, the rest of the property in the county is in the rural place type, is the reason of the RP, um, by the county commission in, in July, rural preservation, with a hundred square, a hundred thousand square foot local lot size. So, this plat complies with that, uh, to go back to, with the exception of this lot right here, uh, which is less than a hundred thousand square feet, however, the preliminary plat vested is prior to, um, the, prior to the change in the design, and so that, that's a vested plan, basically, and so they were allowed to keep that lot as it was for the preliminary plat, first day long. Uh, utilities and fire protection, again, as mentioned, we will all, your floodwater provided by gas tanks, for instance, facilities, they did provide the, the building, the gutter, all type of, um, county hazard requirements, period events, all lots within five hundred feet behind it, I believe all the hydrants have been installed at this time, uh, lots are beyond safety systems, and, uh, the safety areas are shaped on that plat, and with the southeast community fire department, is the volunteer fire department for this area, I think. Roads and drainage, uh, this is the future county road that has been installed at this time, so our requirements, as I've mentioned many times in the past, we do require, uh, the road and all the infrastructure to be installed before they come back for final plat application, uh, some places don't do that, our, our standards are, are pretty rigorous in that regard, uh, but the road has been installed. But the road has been installed to the point of change of location, which means base stones down, firecoats installed, topcoats still remains. So they don't put that down until the end of the process, after the houses are built out. We will require, so that's builds, up our according to final plat, just to show the road where it is. Any other pictures that need to be shown as well? They will need to post sure, remaining infrastructure, these are very large lots, relatively speaking. And so, there's no detention that was required, due to the size of the lots and the proximity to the creep in the back. The county engineer provided a surety letter to that, and I made $4,100. That needs to be posted as a letter of credit prior to recording the final plat. And again, this is that rural state cross section. I believe this may be one of the first ones that was approved, that was done with the rural state cross section. Modernity, what was updated in the last month, they used this cross section as well. And so, I guess this is the second one, they were plating the rural state cross section. This is that surety letter, made $4,100. We have to have the surety posted prior to, as a letter of credit from the bank, prior to signing the plat, we're going to. Mr. Phillips, our former manager, went out today, and took some pictures for us. This is on Grand Mill Road looking down. This is the road, you see how the Anders pop into the distance there. See the hyphens there? Utility he's been outside the right way, which is supposed to be. And the cul-de-sac comes to an end, there's another round there, right there at the end of it. And then that's just looking back at the river. So it's like the river is shaped, they stabilized, they were going to hang in the rain, and come out to anything a long time. But they stabilized it, the roads are good shaped, shoulders look good. Very, very square. For our findings of fact, this testifies all findings of fact, all the county departments met at this one. And there's nothing, nothing that violates any of those, those findings of fact they were having in our files. Next steps, follow the final plat, the river, they need to satisfy the conditions and approval that we have shown, and the plat can be recorded. Once the plat's recorded, they're going to take permits and sell lots. So Mr. Chairman, these example motions are on screen. Example motion wanting to find out all the county departments met, and to approve this final plat, following conditions. One is the standard condition we have, stabilizing out until we may want them to stabilize or finalize prior to the signature. We'll typically go back at that before the plat gets signed. Post a letter of credit, maybe at $8,100, maintain until we say to release it, and provide assets. Do we need to deny it? Do we just comply with some county standard? We check against our regulations, if it does require a block, or to convert if there's additional information that's necessary, but there are approval requirements to stay long. That was my reservation, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Suddeth. Do we have anyone signing to speak, I guess?
Yes, sir.
At least two neighbors here.
Joey, I followed up, I can't read the last name. It's a second name.
Wallace.
Wallace, yeah.
Yeah, I'll refer to CJ, we're the, oh, okay. We're the owner of the telecoms side. CJ was running late, so I just wanted to make sure somebody was here, just people have.
Sorry, Joe.
No problem, okay.
Is there anybody that'd like to speak before we go into? All right. CJ Moore.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for this, for this face.
Okay.
And please, please clarify that the terminal names on the main road, is that, is that part of this belt or the next?
That's the next.
Okay, I was playing, is there clarification?
It's the Gregory Downs development.
Hi, CJ Moore with 615 Design Group. Happy to answer any questions you guys may have. I guess to provide a clarification on the architecture, note, as Josh mentioned, it was a requirement submitted. The architecture that was shown on the screen showed front loaded garages. All of the homes in this development will be side loaded with garages. So I think we've provided that clarification on the adjacent development as well. I just wanted to make sure that they were consistent. These were just what we had at the beginning. We've worked through that architectural, oftentimes, architecture components on some of these projects aren't finalized until, sometimes even after the final plat. But just wanted to provide that clarification. As Josh stated, all the infrastructure has been submitted. We agree, all our staff comments, and happy to answer any questions.
At what point do they widen Red Mill Road?
The requirements that were as far as the COVID and that kind of thing.
Well, no, not the culvert, because I know they're not going that far. But I believe up to the new road, there, to my knowledge, there hasn't been, it's not 18 people, or about, it's 18 people.
I know the portion of Mr. Brooks's property, part of the red, is 20, but there. And I'm just trying to go back there a little bit, it's around 18 acres.
Is it around that age, so there's no widening?
That's right, but as you keep going, it's a little bit more there, I believe. As you head back there, there's extensive discussion on that. It's part of the Gregory Downs project, and so, there's items related to the culvert improvements that US speculately is all the difference, and that I can't do with there.
Yeah, that will all be, yeah. Gregory Downs. I did have a, this is a curious question. There are three, seems like temporary dams running down, is that a requirement, TDE during construction?
They're, they're within the roadside ditches, or?
Running down a bright slate.
Yeah, so they're, yes, that was a fragment of the, of the ESE plans, their TDE. We, and working with them, they wanted us to provide those during construction. Those will likely, we need probably discuss this with Marshall, those will likely remain in place for the time being, until they start construction on those lots. But long term, those are temporary, those will be removed and everything will turn to sheet load, back down to the regular.
Okay. And just to understand, because I couldn't see it on the plans, the water line runs to the new road, with Main Road, and then there's a T that stops.
Yes, sir. And goes, I believe goes to a three inch part of the availability that we received from the adjacent property, was that we would extend that line over Long Brand Road. But for this one, the accrual that we received from testing Springs bed page, was that we would run it to our proposed road, and then down the proposed road all the way to Culde-sac.
And I can't remember, was it six or eight?
It's an eight inch.
Eight inch. And that would run all the way to the Gregory Downs as well?
That's part of the availability that we've received from testing Springs bed page, yes, sir. And I guess I'd like some clarity, additional clarity on the width of the road. We actually met Mr. Roy out on site several weeks ago. The width of the road at the culvert is 17 feet. And then we checked the width of the road along, I guess further down on Gregory Downs, and it's all 18 feet.
Is it all 18?
Yes, sir.
Okay. They're building a house along 22.
The one of the five acre lots? Yes, sir.
Yeah. Is that a shared driveway for lots?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It'll, it goes through, what we wanted to do is, we wanted to, because they have some of the environmental features around there, made that a shared drive along the property line. And then, once it gets past the, they just pond there and splits off and goes either direction.
No, that's not, I appreciate it. Okay, do you have any questions? No, that was a great thing to do.
It was.
Anybody else? Okay.
Thank you.
With that being the case, we have the example motions. We'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion for number one, A through D.
We have a motion, we have a second. Second by Mr. Stroll. Any discussion on the motion? Saying none, we'll go ahead and vote.
Beltray?
Yes.
Holmes, yes?
Yes, sir.
Miller?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Passing in, Mr. Stroll. All right. Summary of your decision, Mr. Stroll?
Yes, sir, just as you know, it's what they've only did, just for information purposes, they have a ministry of approvals that we, we process at the staff level. And as I mentioned, there will be a lot fewer this time than there were last time. If anybody remembers, A through Z, I think. So, so, we're on number Z, yeah. So, nothing, nothing too remarkable there, in this process of things, I think, coming through. I thought I had a, Mr. President, for us, was included, the other week, of the business, I can't remember if it's seven, if it's six. This is just something, Mr. Chairman, that we put on the agenda, it's a lot of voting out, and it's not something we have to have a public hearing on or anything, we put it on the agenda. Every year, or the tribal, we did last year, we've had many years, and many years passed. Every year, some of the county has to submit an annual report to keep that in place for our small market programs. We have to take them all, you know, what are we doing, the public engagement activities that we do, numbers of violations that we issue, those violations that we issue, enforcement actions, we've got to take all that kind of stuff. And so, we have to submit that, I believe, by the end of September each year, as we sign up later, and send to TDE. They encourage us to take it out to the public. We put it on the website, the link, if we put it on that, that kind of thing. And it's something that we have to, it's not a development agenda, it's as an item to discuss. Mr. Phillips is here. Joe Phillips, our small market manager, does, has got any questions about that?
Could we win the call?
It's on the website, it's on the table, it's a draft at this time, but yeah, we can say it. And we have the last, I think, four years on the website, so we can have one.
It means a bit, I agree.
It's a draw. But that's all, that's all I have of that. Mr. Chairman, I'll have a, I'll take, directors, I'll take necessarily be it this time, that people working on the complex that we talked about. They will make, or make pretty big, but all good.
All right, well. Motion to adjourn, any second.
I oppose.
Do your homework, everybody, and get Josh earlier than later.